Okay, a couple of announcements before we move into public participation. Again, I'd just like to remind people that we do have board office hours and that you can schedule them by calling the board office at 773-553-1600. I'm pleased to tell you that people take advantage of these office hours and the board members are pleased to offer them. And so, again, if you would like to schedule them, 773-553-1600. We are in our second month of using our new signup policy for public participation here in the meeting. From our perception, it is going well, but we would look for feedback if people have concerns. People do sign up very quickly, either by phone or online, once the deadlines open. I'm also pleased to observe that actually, when you look at our lists, we have a significant proportion of parents who are signing up, and that is welcome. And in fact, we want to ensure going forward that parents have the opportunity to come and speak before us, and we will. With that, I'm going to ask Stella, our board secretary, to, for the record, tell us about how we'll sign up for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you stated, the March meeting will be rescheduled to April 3rd, 2013. Advanced registration will open at 8:00 a.m. on March 25th, 2013, and will close on March 29th, 2013, at 5:00 p.m., or when the 60 slots fill, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance at 773-553-1600. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And we will now begin public participation. We have the privilege this morning of having two public officials with us today, and as is our practice, we will grant them the right to speak to us first, Alderman Rorbojas and Alderman Graham. I'm going to offer Alderman Graham the, to speak first, if she's still here. I can't see behind the post.
Hi.
You are. So, we're going in ward order. This is the 29th ward. Alderman Rorbojas is 30th.
Thank you, guests, this morning. I've enjoyed the presentation, and before I go into some of my remarks, which will sound a little bit repetitive, but you know, repetition is the key when we're trying to drive something home here. I also appreciated the sexual education program. I'd like to offer that CPS comes to my community meeting. I think the assessment that Mrs. Hines made, that when something is being presented, it is in fact left here. I think that the community needs to benefit from hearing those statistics. I think that what is missing from your statistics is the cultural groups that are mainly affected by those numbers. I think a rude, sober awakening is needed by the community, and sometimes information just doesn't make it home from the students to get to the moms and dads. So, I'd like to offer you to come to my community meeting, which is the first Wednesday in April. I'll set it up for you guys to come, and it's the day that I'm also going to be talking about scholarships and how to get kids to college. And so, we'll have two topics that day, and I'll make you guys the other one, and we'll work with the ministers as well to get community folks there. I think this presentation is highly valuable and extremely important. With that, I'll start with, we can all agree that CPS needs reform. We understand, we need an understanding of what it will take to achieve those reforms. The Austin Education Committee endorses research-based proposals that focus on points that we all, I think that we all can agree on as a citywide community. Parents need to be partners in the CPS, for the CPS students, that they care about their students, and our local school councils are made up of teachers, community members, and parents that know what their schools need. They need to be empowered to be partners in the school reform process and to be heard when those proposals are issued. We need smaller classroom sizes. In order for our students to excel, CPS classroom sizes need to be reduced dramatically, especially for students in grades K through 3. Smaller classrooms means that teachers can spend more quality class time with each student. We need to educate the whole child. Physical and art education can be a part of CPS's program, needs to be a part of CPS's program. Healthy food options, recess, as well as theater, dance, music, and well, world language classes need to be available to every student. A well-rounded curriculum will produce a well-rounded student. All of our students need to be educated. Services for bilingual students, special education, homeless students, and other student population with special needs and circumstances need to be extended to ensure that we are properly educating all of our students. We need adequate wraparound services. The amount of counselors, nurses, social workers, and psychologists need to be increased to ensure that we are not only educating the student's mind, but taking care of their physical and emotional well-being. We also need truancy officers and transportation for students to make sure that all students are able to attend classes, to make sure that all students are in class, have the people to talk to about personal situations, and have aides to deal with the traumatizing violence that is also, that's all too familiar in the city of Chicago. We can do this. We can create a city that is committed to not only educating the children, but to make sure that they are cared for, inspired, emotionally sound, and physically safe. CPS reforms not only has the capability to help children exceed academically, but to help them envision a brighter future for themselves and feel free of violence and a world-changing potential. This is the type of reform our students deserve. So, I wanted to read that statement for you guys this morning, because I'm committed to working with the Austin CAC and the Austin Education Committee to make sure that we stay on course and our voices are heard in this process. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you for coming and giving us this message, and I'm sure we will accept your invitation to come to your meeting.
I insist.
And help you educate.
Thank you so much.
Are you still here? You're hiding behind the post. I can't see you.
Need to see a smile.
Yeah.
Will you come to my meeting?
I need an invitation.
Good morning, everyone, or good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
President, CEO Bennett, Dr. Bennett, thank you very much for allowing me to say a few words here today. I want to acknowledge what you said earlier about the hearings that we've had in our community, and I think it's sent a strong message. My colleague Graham did say that our communities need a rude awakening. It is now. It is the time now. But I also, as the kids said earlier, the kids mentioned the word fear. I fear for some of the outcomes, but the reality is that we have to make some changes. And I fear that some of the changes will not set in properly, and I hope we have the right direction for these kids, as we care of our kids. I want to say, and I will acknowledge as I speak, I want to turn to everyone here. I'm an advocate for schools, and I want to say that again, for all schools. I talk about the CPS. I talk about our private, our charter schools. As a former school teacher for the Board of Ed, you may not find my records, but I will say that I did teach for about three years, and I intend to do it again when I leave City Council. The, what we have to understand is, CEO Bennett, I went to the hearing on February 11th to address some of our parents, some of our mentors, and some of our children that were there, of how difficult these hearings are. But I realize that you are listening. I know there's been some changes, and there's still some changes that are going to take effect, and it's not going to be good, because change is not good. We understand that. I also wanted to let everyone know that I intend to be there tomorrow evening for the second phase of the Fullerton Network, and respectfully so, only because we need to listen. But I also am here, and I want you to understand that I'm here to advocate for ASPIDA, who's in, after the redistricting, ASPIDA is in the 30th ward. It's a good ward, by the way. It's a good ward. The importance is that, you know, we have to understand that ASPIDA serves a very high at-risk group in my community, our Latino community, and I want to say that again. A high percentage of these students have very special needs, very special needs. And despite these challenges, Dr. Bennett, 93% of ASPIDA kids go on to college. That's remarkable. And despite these challenges as well, it continues to offer a college prep curriculum. I have to advocate for them, as I do for CPS, as I do for all the private schools in our community, as a former school teacher. You know, through partnerships, and I've seen it with Northeastern at Illinois University and Wright College, ASPIDA students, if they maintain a B average, they're eligible to take college classes and earn college credits while still in high school. I think that's a good thing. Mr. President and members of the board, as I said earlier, I accepted ASPIDA. As a former school teacher, I learned from a professor, Benny Moncombe, that you have to, in order to be successful in this business of school teaching, you have to learn to provide for each individual differences. I see a lot of that. I see, I see me through the ASPIDA kids. And I remember when I was a child, and I remember when I was a young man, I couldn't come home and talk to my parents, because my parents didn't have that education that we have today. And it was very difficult for me, and I see it in these children, as we see them every day. As you know by now, the Board of Directors of ASPIDA has changed entirely. The new board members are, their staff consists of career professionals, some of which have taught, because that was the question that came out earlier, and they're very passionate. And they came out, they care about our kids as much as I do, all kids, all schools. I respectfully ask you to give them an opportunity to prove themselves. They're in the right direction. Give them an opportunity to engage in a positive direction for the youth in my community. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Appreciate you coming by.
On a non-related note, I would like for you to come to my ward as well. But you know, I want to congratulate the board and our CEO for understanding the pre-K needs in our community, and it'll soon be all day. But also, consider addressing our schools that are overcrowded and still operating on overenrollments, because it's going to, you know, you have to look at those boundaries, and I hope you acknowledge that soon, because it does make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. We do recognize we have challenges of overcrowding, as well as underutilization. Madam Secretary, please proceed with the rest of public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will begin by calling the first speaker, please. Speaker number one, Lynn Watkins, followed by speaker number two, Angela Rudolph, and then speaker number three, please, Michael Butts.
Stella, is Karen here? Yeah. Invite Karen up first.
If I may ask, before the first speaker approaches the mic, if I may please call Ms. Karen Lewis, the president of the CTU, please.
Sorry, Karen, I didn't see you behind the post over there. We've got to stop seating you people behind the post.
See you.
I'm sorry. It's good to have you back. We've missed you the last few months.
I have been so busy. Gee, wonder why. First of all, good afternoon. Carlos, I haven't seen you in a long time, and congratulations on being on the board, because it obviously is very new. And Barbara, I haven't seen you in that seat, so, you know, welcome to Chicago officially. I would like to first thank you for the recommendation towards full-day kindergarten. I think it is extremely important, and it's something that Barbara and I have talked about for a while, and again, it's always good when, when the people in power actually listen to those of us that do the work. Okay, that's my carrot. You know what's coming next. So, I'm still concerned about school closings, and we've been talking about them all day, but here's something else I want us to really think about. As educators, we always do reflection. It is extraordinarily important that we reflect on the practices that work and those that don't. What I would hope is that the board entertain doing an impact study, because now we've had 10 years of data on school closings. And what I am extremely concerned about is that the underutilization did not happen from thin air, that some of the policies that, you know, people that sat in these seats before you made contribute seriously to them. Because I am also concerned that in my own neighborhood, if my grandchildren were to come stay with me, there is no way that they would have a traditional K through 8 public school to attend. That has to tell us something. But the key is, we must do the research. We must reflect on what we've done in the past, so that we do not make any of these problems more difficult in the future. You know we have asked for a moratorium on school closings, and I know you have said, if we do these this time, in the next five years, I'm going to still ask for them. However, we still have other recommendations, and one of the good things is the all-day kindergarten was something that we have recommended in our report, "The Schools That Chicago's Children Deserve." We still need to see, in this town right now, please consider more social workers for our students. I've asked, I texted David, I hope you listened, to the This American Life about Harper High School, and I hope on some level, we all understand what is actually working well and what won't. But the key is, our children need help. The idea, and they need help on a serious basis, and they need someone to talk to. And as a person that taught at King High School, I cannot tell you how difficult it was to go talk to the teachers who lost a student. One, only one, and with other schools losing more and more. Our children are suffering from PTSD. We cannot close our eyes to this any longer and pretend that the real world does not impact our children. So, I would hope that before you make any momentous decisions, that you also visit the schools as a board, that you intend to close, and that you look in the eyes of the children, of the teachers, of the parents in the community, and not just read the reports, because that is extraordinarily important that you make that attempt to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, and thanks for your text. I actually, I actually had already listened to the first, and I've also listened to the second, and it's a great story, and I appreciate you letting me know it was there. And stay in touch.
I will always stay in touch with you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Barbara, thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
For all-day kindergarten.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, our first speaker then will be Lynn Watkins, please, speaker number one.
Good morning, members of the board. I am here as a concerned parent, community member, and a member for Stand for Children. I attended two of the public community meetings regarding the school utilization issue and found both to be very discouraging. The authentic dialogue required for a subject matter so sensitive was simply not there. The tone of those protesting shut down the opportunity for some of us to speak out about the current challenges us as parents and community leaders face and wanted to express to CPS. No one wants to see any school closed. However, those with louder voices will make victims of the voiceless, parents who only want to send their child to a safe, nurturing, learning environment close to their home. These same voiceless parents may not know about all the options available to them after school actions. Not all Chicago neighborhoods have selective enrollment or magnet choice options. Why is that? I have to send my child to a magnet school well over 10 miles away from my South Side home, because I felt there were not enough options available to continue to challenge my own children. How does CPS plan to educate parents affected by school actions about all their options? Will those affected by these school closings really have access to better schools in their own neighborhoods? Most parents may not have the resources or are comfortable sending their children across the city for better education. We call on CPS to guarantee at least one high-performing, welcoming school in each zip code for all parents. Give parents a real choice and a real voice in this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. President, speaker number two, Angela Rudolph, and as she approaches, she'll be followed by speaker number three, Michael Butts. And then the next group will be the individuals from the Intrinsic School, and they have identified two designated speakers, and they will be speaker number 14, Carla Arroyo, followed by speaker 21, Araceli Paz.
Good morning, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Angela Rudolph, and I'm the Policy Director with Education Reform Now Illinois. I'm here to applaud your efforts to provide every child in every community access to a high-quality education that prepares them for college and career by approving today's docket of charter school renewals and the phase-out of two charter school campuses. When the first charter school opened 20 years ago, its leaders did so because they wanted to provide all children with an opportunity to attend a great school. Since then, the field has made great strides, and thousands of charter schools across the country have provided its students with an excellent education. But many charter schools perform, while many charter schools perform at high levels, many others perform at low ones. We at Education Reform Now believe charter schools are a vital part of the education landscape and should be allowed to continue to serve the needs of students and families across the district. That being said, we do not believe charters are the only solution, and we strongly believe that they should not become a part of what ails public education. Charter school authorizers and charter school supporters bear responsibility to fix the failings in this sector, so that more children have an opportunity to attend an excellent school. Your actions today are a good first step towards ensuring that all schools not only have both autonomy, that they are entitled, but also the public accountability to which they are responsible. The Chicago charter school landscape has shown positive effects. In 2009, the Rand Corporation did a national longitudinal evaluation of charter schools, which included Chicago.
Excuse me, Ms. Randolph, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
And while we know that those schools here are doing well and providing the schools in the city excellent opportunity, we suggest that you need to sharpen your focus on accountability by including a broad array of metrics broader than just what's happening with test scores, and make sure that schools are providing an adequate education. I've included some resources for your review. Thank you, Mr. Ruiz, for attending the forum that we had in January. As you look through, you'll see that you are on the right road. Thank you very much.
Ms. Rudolph, thank you for your comments today. Our next speaker, please.
Thank you, Ms. Rudolph.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Thank you for hearing our comments today. My name is Michael Butts. I am a parent of a third grader, a quality improvement professional, and a proud member of Stand for Children. I first want to give my appreciation to CPS and the board for listening to the passionate voices of our communities. In the October Board meeting, my fellow members presented our vision to renew our schools and renew our neighborhoods. I appreciate that CEO Bird Bennett has committed to keeping all Level 1 schools open next year. I also want to sincerely applaud the CPS Commission for taking into account a school's performance and track record when considering a school action, namely, that CPS will neither close schools that are, quote, "on the rise," nor move students to a school without higher performance than the one they are leaving. However, from a quality improvement perspective, I'm worried to know what "on the rise" really means. I call on CPS and this board to clarify what it means for a school to be, quote, "high-performing." I measure things to improve them for a living, and I call on CPS to improve its school report cards, so that it is accurate, transparent, readable, relevant, and assets-based. This report should be the gold standard, so that we, all of us, parents, the board, CPS, can compare all public schools, including charters and magnets and selective enrollment. As it stands now, I do not feel that we can be certain of where a particular school is in relation to other CPS schools, and we absolutely need to have this certainty to make the kind of decisions that will impact tens of thousands of students and families in this city. Part of Stand for Children's Renewing Schools, Renewing Neighborhoods campaign depends on having confidence that we know exactly what we're looking at.
Excuse me, Mr. Butts, can you please conclude?
That is the board's and CPS's challenge and somber responsibility, and we plan to hold you to it. I thank you for your attention to this very important matter.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 14, Carla Arroyo, followed by speaker 21, Araceli Paz, and then followed by speaker number five, Queen Sister, and then speaker number six, please, Bonita Robinson.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Carla Arroyo. Vivo al noroeste de Chicago y soy mamá de una estudiante que está en las escuelas públicas de Chicago y otro que está en una escuela privada. Hoy estoy aquí por la razón de que quiero agradecer a CPS por haber aprobado Intrinsic una nueva escuela de alta calidad, ya que gracias a ello mi hija, que actualmente cursa el octavo grado en la escuela interamericana, ahora tiene la oportunidad de una mejor educación que le abrirá el camino para una universidad, algo muy importante para el crecimiento de nuestra comunidad. Intrinsic es ahora una nueva puerta para nuestros hijos, con una educación preparatoria que les depara un futuro más promisorio, que los haga mejores ciudadanos, y con un régimen estricto de educación. Nuestro barrio ya necesitaba de nuevas oportunidades para nuestros jóvenes, dándoles así la opción de mantenerse fuera de las calles, recibir una educación de calidad, y poder brillar en este tiempo tan competitivo. De antemano quiero agradecerles en nombre de la comunidad el haberme dado la oportunidad de expresar el sentimiento de la misma. Esto es lo que hace grande a nuestra ciudad, nuestro estado, y nuestro país. Gracias y que pasen un excelente día.
I will be doing the translation. Good morning. My name is Carla Arroyo. I live in the northwest side of Chicago, and I'm a mother of a student that is currently enrolled in CPS and another that attends a private school. I'm here today to thank CPS for having approved Intrinsic School, a new high-quality school in the north side. We are thankful that now, our daughter, who is an eighth grader at Inter-American Magnet School, has the opportunity for a better education that will provide a path to college, which is a very important, which is very important for the growth of our community. Intrinsic is now a new opportunity for our students with a high-quality education that will prepare them for a bright future, that will move them, make them, excuse me, better citizens with a strict educational regimen. Our neighborhood needed and needs new opportunities for our students, helping them to stay off the streets. It will also help them to receive a high-quality education and to shine in a competitive era. Thank you on behalf of our community for the opportunity of expressing our thoughts and feelings. This is how things will be better in our city, state, and country. Thank you, and have an excellent day.
Mi nombre es Araceli Paz y vivo en el vecindario de Jefferson Park. Tengo dos hijos, Marvin and Carla, de 16 y 13 años, respectivamente. Los dos son estudiantes de las escuelas públicas de Chicago. Quiero agradecerles el apoyo que nos están brindando los padres como yo, que sabemos la importancia de ofrecer a nuestros hijos una educación de excelente calidad. Sé que algunos padres se sienten molestos por los cambios que están sucediendo en las escuelas de nuestras comunidades. Hoy hablo por mis hermanas, amigas, vecinas, y miembros de mi comunidad, quienes queremos escuelas de excelencia dentro de nuestro vecindario. Tal vez algunos de ustedes se preguntarán, ¿qué dice esta mujer? Tal vez mis palabras no tienen mucho significado ahora, pero cuando mi hija llega a casa y me cuenta sobre sus experiencias en la escuela, cuando matemáticas, ciencias, u otra materia parecen ser otro idioma completamente inentendible, nuestra situación es la misma. Mi esposo y yo como padres y ya hacen la educación de nuestros hijos, hemos encontrado una esperanza en la escuela secundaria intrinsic.
Again, I will do the translation for that portion. Good morning. My name is Araceli Paz. I live in Jefferson Park. I have two children, Marvin and Carla, aged 16 and 13, and both are students of CPS. I would like to thank you, CPS, for the support that you are offering parents like myself, parents who understand the importance of offering our students an excellent quality education. I know that there are some parents who are upset with the changes going on in the schools, in their community. I speak for my sisters, friends, neighbors, and members of the community, all of whom, like myself, want our children to receive an excellent quality education in our neighborhoods. Some of you may be asking yourselves, what is this lady saying? Maybe my words don't mean much right now, but when, as, when, and as my daughter comes home and tells me about her experiences at school, about math, science, or any other subject, which seems to be a different language, completely incomprehensible, our positions and situations are the same. My husband and I, as parents and guides in our children's education and lives, we have found hope in intrinsic school.
Thank you very much. Then our next speaker will be speaker number six, please, Bonita Robinson.
I'm Nadam, excuse me. Using the same language is so important for effective communication. I'm working on it. I decided to speak in Spanish, so you may understand the way many students and parents feel the way. feel the way when their knees feel when their knees are not covered. The translator was the key for us to understand each other. Intrinsic High School is the key for my daughter and other childrens to be understanding and have better preparation for life. Intrinsic will offer my daughter the opportunity to be part of a new era of technological education, where the opportunities of success will take her to finish high school, go to a college, but the most important, to finish a career, is naturally to shape education. Our kids deserve it. Our neighborhoods, our state, our nation can be the most competitive in the world. Education is power. Please empower our children to reach it. Please keep supporting us. Now is the moment. Thank you very much and have a wonderful day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Our next speaker, then, will be Speaker number six, Bonita Robinson. As she approaches, then, the next speaker to follow will be Speaker number seven, please, Corinthia Federick, followed by the group from Inglewood, and they have identified two designated speakers, please. Speaker number eight, Rodney Jones, followed by Speaker number 18, Edward Peacher.
Happy Black History Month. My name is Bonita Robinson, and today I pose the question, what would Cardigi Woodson, the father of Black History Month and the author of the classic "Miseducation of the Negroes," say about CPS school closing? Well, it would take no time at all for him to see through the smoke and mirrors and to expose the attempt to justify the annihilation of black neighborhood schools as a bold, arrogant embodiment of the diabolical miseducation that he warned about in his writing. Then he would refute your faulty justification for closing schools with data from Lynda Darling Hammond, CCSR, ISAT, NAEP, and all that data that indicates that there was a dramatic national narrowing of the black and white achievement gap in the 20 years preceding the advent of this practice of closing schools and a dramatic widening of the gap in the 20 years since the advent of the practice of closing schools, with CCSR researchers suggesting that school closings as a cause of this negative development. He would go on to cite data from ISBE that indicate the decimation of the number of African-American teachers. He would also cite the public testimony of teachers who have told of how classrooms that were once warm and motivating have been transformed into cold and brutal testing mills due to your reform policies. And he would cite numerous newspaper headlines proclaiming the violence and fear enveloping our students since CPS began closing schools. After presenting all of the data that demonstrate CPS's culpability in the sabotage of neighborhood schools in black communities, he would pose the following questions as part of his indictment of CPS's actions. Number one, CPS, after the dramatic national narrowing of the black-white achievement gap in the 20 years prior to your practice of closing neighborhood schools and opening charter schools, how do you account for continuing this practice given the subsequent widening of that gap under this type of school reform?
Ms. Robinson, Ms. Robinson, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I'll go to the end. The answer, miseducation, greed, and institutional racism. I close by saying any plans CPS, board, and administration made for our children must first address the question of your culpability in the widening of the academic gap that had previously been steadily narrowing, and of your culpability in the destabilization, violence, and loss in black communities since you began the practice of closing schools. There is no place in our children's lives for miseducation, greed, or institutional racism. No more closing. We must return to the closing of the gap in stable, nurturing, and well-resourced learning environments. Thank you. Happy Black History Month.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. President, is Speaker number seven, please. Corinthia Federick, followed by Speaker number eight, Rodney Jones, and Edward Peacher.
Hello, board. My name is Corinthia Federick. I'm a William Penn parent. I'm also a parent representative at William Penn on Chicago's west side, North Longdale. I'm gonna try to make it so fast. Our school has been on Level 3 probation for six years. The principal, we don't have really an issue with underutilization. The biggest issue that we have at Penn is leadership. We have poor leadership at Penn, and I just have to go ahead and say it. The principal, Dr. Ollie, there, she spent her entire 25-year education at William Penn, and once she became the principal there, the school's been on academic probation since. Now, I, and there's a gigantic disconnect between administrative and parent bodies at Penn. Our parent participation is under 3%, and it's not because we have 97% bad parents, but from my end and other parents that I inquire, we just don't feel like the school leadership respects us, our opinions and grievances, especially in matters where staff is concerned. Because of this kind of camaraderie and comfortability, teachers are not held to submitting parent portal information once a week. They're not held to responding to parents' requests for meetings. Staff are not held accountable for making aggressive physical contact with students, nor are they held accountable for using profane language in front of the students and directed to the students. It's a madhouse in there. This year, our eighth grader's main teacher missed more days than she actually attended, more instruction days, and there still is an adequate replacement. And being an LSC member, I got on the LSC because they want to listen to me as a regular parent. I got to see firsthand contributors to the Penn crisis. In the last seven LSC meetings I've attended, we talked about our poor school standing, but yet at no time did we discuss how to improve it. We talked about our policy report and scorecards, and at no time did we discuss how to positively impact student and discipline and performance moving forward. And when we did speak upon how to get parents involved, there is no follow-through about the principal or the LSC. Total disconnect. It's normal for the LSC's job to remove or choose a principal, but come on, she's been there for 25 years. Those guys are all great friends. I'm about to stop. They're all great friends. So, I wanted to know from the board, when we have situations like this where everybody's friends, the main concern is not really what the school is, but it's some kind of a social club is what the LSC is, at what point does the board step in and say enough is enough and they exercise their executive powers to change the leadership in the school? Because Penn is a total leadership issue, I'm telling you right now. We need quality leadership driving our quality education. No more complacency and passiveness. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As the next speaker approaches for the Inglewood Community Group, they will be followed by Speaker number nine, Dwayne Trust, and then Speaker number 10, Duane Wilson, and Speaker number 28, Mildred Wiley, are the designated speakers for the Austin Neighborhood Community Group. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rodney Jones. I'm a resident of Inglewood, and I'm here as a concerned parent. I really didn't prepare a lot for the board. I just wanted to speak from personal experience to encourage the board to institute some kind of middle school module in the Inglewood area. I personally went to school during the 90s, and as a participant in the Options for Knowledge Program, I was able to be bused from my area to another school on the north side called Sullivan High School for seventh, eighth grade. During this time, I was exposed to a bit of accelerated learning as far as sociology, English Lit, physical education, and many other things. Only thing we didn't have access to was open campus, and I found that it actually helped develop a passion in me for learning. And later on, after I completed eighth grade, the funding for the Options for Knowledge Program was cut, and I was forced to return to my neighborhood school, which was actually Roberto Clemente at the time, which was in such a state that the board was actually instituting the replacement of a principal. They brought in Irene Demota. I don't know if any of you recall who she is, but that didn't work out so well. And when I actually returned to the neighborhood and reconnected with some of the people, there was a glaring difference in just the people in itself as far as regards to the women who actually contracted STDs and became pregnant, the young men who were arrested or actually murdered in the neighborhoods from those that actually participated in the program, who received a higher education in the program as opposed to those who remained in seventh, eighth grade within their neighborhoods. There was a wide glaring difference.
Excuse me, Mr. Jones, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, ma'am. This is why I'm here today, though, to encourage that the board continue to support any motions to adopt a middle school module in the Inglewood area, because I believe that the youth there would benefit greatly from it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Come on by.
Good afternoon, President Vitale. The school board, thank you for the opportunity. Dr. Bennett, my name is Bishop Edward Peacher. I am the founding pastor of Chicago Embassy Church in Inglewood. I'm also on the steering committee for the Helping Hands of Inglewood, and we have formulated a strategy for the entire educational system of Inglewood, educational strategy for Inglewood. And we presented that document to Dr. Bennett, and it called for the consolidation of schools. What it actually did, it changed the dialogue. It changed the conversation from school closing to reorganizing the educational strategy. And I stand here today to add my voice to the appeal to have a, to consider a middle school in Inglewood. There is a component of education that is missing in that, in that Inglewood community in a middle school or a series of middle schools, as a matter of fact, would be, go a large way in identifying or focusing resources and energy and effort to the students that are developing in their social skills, their problem-solving skills, their conflict resolution skills, and a middle school would go a long way in helping those students, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Duane Trust, a board member of Raging Hamfield on Education and Pace, and I just wanted to wait for my west side family to gather up here. We also have some petitions in which our family collected and include that, too. Petitions I'd like to present to you to board members, and I'll get, good afternoon, and I'll get right to it. If you tell a lie big enough and keep repeating it, people will eventually come to believe it. The lie can be maintained only for such time as the state can shield the people from the political, economic, or military consequences of the lie. Thus, it thus becomes vital, important for the state to see all its powers used to repress dissent, for the truth is the mortal enemy of the lie, and thus by extension, the truth is the greatest enemy of the state. As you have noticed in some of those community meetings, that the feedback is overwhelmingly rejection of the lie that's keep being put out there, the misinformation by CPS about there's this utilization crisis. We keep hearing numbers like there's a billion-dollar budget deficit for the next school year, and this morning I just heard now is a billion-dollar budget deficit for three years. We hear that CPS lost 145 school-aged children, but in reality, you only lost 28,200 students since 2000, and you keep repeating these same numbers, which is very misleading and part of this perpetration of a lie. You took 40% of the seats from high schools and Level 1 schools off the table, which means you practically solved half the utilization crisis, but then there's still a crisis. To demonstrate how assertive this process has been, of the seven schools from the Austin community currently on the list, Depriest McNair are newer buildings. May was recently renovated. Lewis is budgeted for a current $8.5 million renovation. Emmett has some work done, and you're saying that, well, we need to go ahead and use, do these things to save money so we don't have to, we can invest in these schools, but these schools have already been invested in, but they're on the list.
Mr. Trust, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yeah.
Thank you.
When your capital budget, you spend the $75 million on CVS High School, which has a 34% utilization rate, so you obviously, you know, see fit to spend money, you know, on an underutilized building when you can use that $75 million to keep our schools open. And an insult to the insult is the fact that you got AUSL schools on the list, which you know that you're not going to close because of the relationship with the crony capitalism that's going along with AUSL.
Mr. Trust.
So, I thank you for this time. We got some handouts that family gave you, and we want to keep our neighborhood schools open and save our schools, right?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Trust. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 10, Duane Wilson, followed by Speaker 28, Mildred Wiley.
My name is Duane Wilson, Executive Director of the Peace Corner Youth Center, which is a nonprofit on Chicago's west side in the Austin neighborhood. And during the daytime, we have an opportunity to serve young adults in career development such as computer literacy, financial literacy, as well as anger management. But in the evening time, after school, that's when we become a very lively place. A slow day, we serve over 100 youth for after-school activities such as recreation, homework assistance, and one of the biggest things that are close to my heart is making sure that the youth have an opportunity to have access to the resources they need. Many of the high school students that we serve go to high schools outside of the Austin community, and sometimes it's challenging because sometimes it actually comes into a safety issue. There's a young lady that comes to our center very frequently. She goes to a school outside of the area, and many cases she can't get to our services because it takes her a long time to take the bus or take transportation in order to get to our center to receive the free tutoring and mentoring services that we have. That's why I stand with New Schools for Chicago in bringing a noble high school to the Austin community, because if we have another quality high school in that area, that not only shows that the, there's an investment to the community from CPS, but also shows that the youth actually have a place to go and continue to build pride in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, as the next speaker approaches, Speaker number 28, Mildred Wiley. We will continue, then, with Speaker number 11, please, Candace Harris, followed by Speaker number 12, Jennifer Scott, and then we'll proceed with Speaker number 13, Delia Bonilla, and Speaker number 37, Emma Segura from the Eames Community. Thank you.
Good morning, board. My name is Mildred Wiley. I'm here from Bethel New Life, a community economic development corporation located in the Austin community. I'm talking very fast because I want to get my stuff through quick. I just want to say, we in the Austin community have a rich, rich, rich history of great schools. From, I know Weston House High School is not immediately located in our area, but it is adjacent, and we helped grow that school as well. I'm here for quality. I know what it looks like. I know what it smells like. I know what it feels like, and I know what our children need. That's my definition of an operator. They have to have a quality program driven by data, proved by years of investment in my community. That's what we want in the Austin community, so I'm welcoming anybody who has a definition of quality. It has to come up to my rubric and our test scores, and not just test scores. We got to have jobs for our young people. This is what we want, and this is why I'm here today, asking for a quality option operator in the Austin community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Candace Harris, and I am a teacher in the North Longdale area on the west side of Chicago at the Herschel School of Excellence, which is an AUSL school. I was only at Herschel for one year before it became an AUSL turnaround, but in that short amount of time, I was able to experience a lack of community within the school walls. In my opinion, this was due to different agendas being put into play simultaneously. Everyone was for the children and their progress, but chose to follow their own plan of how to reach the goals set for the students. This resulted in a breakdown in communication between the administration and the teachers and among the teachers themselves, which led to poor overall student discipline, development, and achievement. Since the AUSL turnaround, the cohesiveness among all staff members is much stronger. Everyone has the same purpose and plan and strives toward the same goals for the students. There is much more within grade level and across grade level collaboration, which has helped to raise the bar for instruction, not only by looking at where students are currently, but also looking at each student as far as where we want him or her to be academically at the start of next school year in August. Also, the notion that everyone is a teacher, from the teachers themselves to the administration to the security and even the lunchroom staff, is totally embraced at the Herschel School of Excellence, which means everyone lends a hand in instruction through push-in and pull-out interventions as well as with student discipline. This model of everyone is a teacher has helped to decrease student discipline infractions and to boost overall student achievement. I urge you not to stop the path that this school is on. The AUSL turnaround has put the Herschel School of Excellence back on the map. Change is not coming for the Herschel School of Excellence. It is already here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Scott. I live in the South Shore area, and I am proud to, I, wait, I live in the South Shore area and I am a proud parent of three children who attend Bradwell School of Excellence. I am also a recent graduate of Stand for Children as a certified parent advocate. My children have been attending Bradwell since 2007. They are now in the grades of fourth, fifth, and seventh. Before Bradwell became an AUSL turnaround school, it was in really bad shape. There wasn't a lot of learning going on because of the children constantly had to deal with violence in the school. I feared for my children's safety. Now, I don't have to worry about their safety because the learning is their priority number one. I am happy to report that Bradwell School of Excellence is living up to its name. The school has improved and is now a Level 2 and working hard to become a The school has improved and is now a Level Two, and working hard to become a Level One. This has happened because AUSL have come into this school and turned it around for the better. I am very proud of Principal Bennett. She is an outstanding leader. Bradwell has grown so much from three years ago until now. Ms. Bennett encourages parents to get involved and become active with the students and the school. As busy as she is, she still makes time to sit down with the parents and discuss how to make things better for the students at Bradwell. Who would have thought, between then and now, things would have turned around for the better? Last year, I took parent engagement classes with the Stanford Children.
Ms. Scott, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just like the parents at Sherman School of Excellence, like Bradwell School, Sherman has made major improvements and is now a Level Two. Although Bradwell is not on the closing list, I am here to talk about how much AUSL model has improved my school. I want other parents to benefit from the AUSL turnaround model as much as my children and I have. Please continue to support the AUSL turnaround model. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Our next speaker then, please, will be Speaker thirteen, Delia Bonilla, followed by Speaker number thirty-seven, Emma Segura, and then we'll proceed with Speaker number fifteen, please, Katie Gilson, followed by Speaker sixteen, Rosemary Stephanie, and then Speaker seventeen, please, Todaya Murphy.
Good afternoon, Board of Education and members. My name is Delia Bonilla. I am a parent from Ames Middle School and member of the Logan Square School Facility Council. As you know, Alderman Maldonado is loving to replace Ames School, which serves this Logan Square neighborhood, with selective and citywide marine academy. We deposit this. Alderman Maldonado and Mayor Emanuel are supporters of marine that understand, would you like to move into the Latino neighborhood? We are sure they can find a different side of the marine. In Latino neighborhood and over in the twenty-sixth hour, we now destroying Ames, a good Level Two community schools. Parents survived over four hundred Ames area families, and found that ninety-five percent don't own a military school. Parents are a community school which can serve all the students in the neighborhood. We want the five, four fifty and seven and eighth grades, and apes go if they don't want a military school. We want the seven or twelve open to all and connected to the community. Here, I have Juan Carlos Farado, a good student for the Ames Middle School. Some meanwhile, parents, community reps, teachers, and LSA staff to Logan Square School Facility Council have been looking at better models for Ames. One model that we're looking for closely, of community links, the high schools' bill principal, Dr. Carlos Escoitia, at Spry School and Little Village. Last week, LSFC members, Ames Paris parents, Ms. Williams or Fullerton Network Chief, and Ivy or School Principal meet with our Mr. Bohas and Jones.
Ms. Bonilla, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
Community school principal and Mr. Corti, Elena Barmar, the Joseph Hall School, Mother Spire Schools. We believe that men who deserve and appropriate community best mothers such community links. We have the plan to visit Spry Schools at the week of the March eighteenth to learn about these schools. We did research with the founder, Community Links has a Level Two schools, you're like marine, his bilingual service with her community needs eighty point, seven point one freshman grade with five years compared to seventy-eight.
Ms. Bonilla, thank you for your comments, please.
Okay, this is important. Thank you. It's attendance ninety forms of Community Links compared to one final.
Next speaker, please.
And today here is for members of Community Links, for Community Links, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bonilla. Yeah.
My name is Katie Gilson. I am a National Board certified teacher. I teach at Sumner Math and Science Academy, and I teach preschool for all. I attended the first Garfield Humboldt Park community hearings. The size of the facility was inadequate for the crowd of over one thousand. At one point, Spanish-speaking parent participants were urged to go to the basement, which is a form of segregation. Two speakers were allowed to speak per school, chosen by the principals at the direction of the network chief. The recorder for CPS stayed in the main meeting for the first half. The overflow of people was sent to the basement and the recorder went down with them. This left no one to record the second half of the main meeting, or the first half of whatever went on downstairs. Although this was called a breakout session, in reality, it was a crowd control issue. The CPS representatives told security to lock the doors due to the number of people trying to get in. The report on the CPS website states a PowerPoint was shown. This is not true. How does the Board of Ed expect readers to get an accurate account of events when half the meeting was not documented? Why are the CEO and the Board of Ed members not attending these meetings? This is a slap in the face for the communities. CPS is deliberately pitting school against school, neighbor against neighbor. No schools should be closed, and students' deaths resulting from this action are the responsibility of CPS. Because of the ready-to-learn applications, no one knows if their school will even have a preschool program next year. Schools have been told not to enroll any students, and CPS laid off all the early childhood coaches in June, and only four have been rehired to this date out of fourteen. CPS had one of the best early childhood programs in the country.
Ms. Gilson, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Professional development, personnel cuts, and money cuts have severely hindered the programs. There are now long waiting lists for the children. Ms. Barbara Bird Bennett, we do hope that you received the book that the preschool children sent to you regarding their school. Their definition of a hero is someone that helps people and tells the truth, and they truly hope the Board of Ed will become a hero, which is not happening.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Our next speaker will be Speaker number seventeen, Todaya Murphy, followed by Speaker nineteen, Janet Dugan, and then Speaker number twenty-two, please, Matthew Davis.
Hello. My name is Tereya Murphy. I'm a leader with New Schools for Chicago, a CPS graduate, and I currently live on the South Side of Chicago. I'm here today to thank you for your efforts to improve schools in Chicago and to let you know about people who I encounter through our seven-seven-three-four schools hotline every day. I meet families through the hotline each day who would vote with their feet if they could. I want to tell you about Ms. Mosley. She represents a group of parent callers that I frequently encounter. Ms. Mosley recently moved to Chicago and enrolled her daughter into her local public school. Not being a Chicago native, Ms. Mosley came into the school with a different set of expectations about what a public school should be. But shortly after enrolling her daughter, Ms. Mosley realized that the school was not meeting the standards of her previous school. She told me her daughter was not being challenged and that the school had too many problems. She is looking for other options for the upcoming school year. There are a lot of concerned parents looking for quality options for their children. Through our hotline, I assist and enroll parents into our Increase Your Odds program. Increase Your Odds is a free program that picks up where the New Schools Expo leaves off. We remind families about charter deadlines, and after charter school lotteries take place, we help families find a charter school with space if the ones they apply to do not have enough room. To date, we have enrolled approximately two thousand families into the program, but sadly, last year, we were only able to assist two hundred and thirty in finding seating. This is partially due to the fact that there were and still are not enough quality charter schools. Also, some of the options that were available simply were not convenient or feasible because of locations. These families deserve school choice. On behalf of them, I ask you to keep opening high-performing charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.